I want to welcome you all to our meeting this evening. If we could stand, pledge allegiance and remain silent.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? And it's time I need a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes of the February 15th meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
So moved.
Communication, Mr. John Bacon will come and present our coaches and introduce them for girls swim and wrestling for the winter sports.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for giving us this opportunity to recognize some of our winter sports teams this evening. I'd like to thank the parents for all the support that you give to your students and our programs throughout the year. And also, most importantly, I want to thank you student athletes that do such a great job of representing Farmington High School and everything that you do. First off, we are going to recognize our boys wrestling program with Coach John Kraus.
Okay, so when I saw Coach Bacon earlier today, I said I had my little presentation down to 20 minutes, and he said that was good.
(laughing)
Good. That's a lot. Between Dr. Kraus and I, she says I'm a little wordy, so I will see what I can do. I want to start, obviously, with thanking the board for your continued support and allowing extracurriculars, co-curriculars to be such an important piece in the education process in Farmington. We're blessed to work for this district and to be in this district, so we appreciate that. Also, I want to thank Coach Bacon, obviously moving on, but I've appreciated working with Coach Bacon and the opportunities that he's provided and the relationship that we've had. I wanted to make sure that we recognize him today for everything that he's done for wrestling. It's been a pleasure working with him, and I've appreciated, you know, not only how he's supported the wrestling program, but also, you know, sounding board and allowed me to bounce things off of him and held me accountable at times as well, so I appreciate that. But we're here, obviously, to recognize the boys wrestling program and the year that they've had. You know, we talk team a lot, and I would love to have the team here and make sure that we understand that we have individual successes, and that's what we're here to talk about, but it is truly a team effort because without those workout partners and the other kids in the room, we wouldn't accomplish what we have as individuals. But as a team, we finished first in the CMO conference. That's only the 11th time that we've done that in history. It was a complete team effort, and whether the boys are recognized or not tonight for that, everyone on the team had a part of that. We also competed well at the state tournament and ended up with the sixth place, just out of the trophies, but we represented ourselves in the school district well. There are a couple of things before we go into the individuals that I want to kind of mention because it kind of tells me that we're on the right track with where we're at culturally as a program. And first of all is the fact that we had so many boys, more boys than we've had for many, over several years, finish the season, even though, you know, they may be JV or not even JV, their season is technically done, but they stayed and they pushed the varsity wrestlers and the ones that were placing at the state tournament and competing at the varsity level. So I think that speaks volumes. I also, not just that we finished sixth at the state tournament, but the way the boys competed and bouncing back after a rough quarterfinals says a lot about where we're at as a program and what their parents have instilled and what we're doing and who they are as individuals. So with that, we'll go ahead and recognize individuals. First up, we have Dayton Boyd. Dayton Boyd is a senior. Go ahead and stand. Dayton Boyd's a senior for us. Had a great year. You know, we've known for a long time how talented Dayton is. He finished sixth for us last year. He finished fifth this year at the Kansas City Stampede. His only two losses on the year were at the Stampede, which is usually a nationally ranked, I haven't looked this year, but it's usually a nationally ranked tournament. He took two losses there, avenging the first loss that he had when he took fifth, wrestling the fifth-place match. He was also a conference champion for us. He was a district champion for us and ended up winning state for us this year as well. He was dominant all year long. Like I said, he only lost two matches, one of which he avenged that loss later in the tournament. So, you know, very proud parents, right? And they have a right to be. He's worked hard. He's come a long way in terms of leadership and maturity over the last year, and it was, just had a great season. So Dayton Boyd.[335.03][335.03](applause) Well, Johnson, freshman. Presley had a great year as well. You know, when I say that Dayton only had two losses, we had boys with more losses, but our schedule to do that and to have the records that we did up and down the lineup this year was, it was a good year. Presley, freshman for us. He took second at conference, lost to the individual who was a runner-up at the state tournament in the conference finals. He took third districts, but avenged that loss in the blood round, no semifinal, no, blood round, blood round to get into place at the state tournament. Again, some of those wins that we had later in the season really tell you, talk about the character of our boys. They could have laid down a couple of times and just accepted, but they came back and beat kids later in the year when it counted. He also, as a freshman, took fourth at the state tournament, which is amazing. It's the first freshman that we've had place probably since the early 2000, so we get him back for another three years. You know, again, we've got a lot of hard workers, but Presley as a freshman is in there, maybe not vocal, but leading his, you know, in his work ethic and what he does. So Presley Johnson.[410.12][410.12](applause) Academic All-State, probably most important, you know. He's not just a great wrestler. He applies himself well in the classroom and is doing good things there. Zach Dennis is our next wrestler. He's a sophomore. Zach came up just a little bit short qualifying for the state tournament and placing at districts this year, but Zach was a huge part of us winning the conference championship as a team this year. He was, he came in seeded either fourth, no, 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 third or sixth, no, sixth I think, and ended up beating the number-two seeded kid in the semifinals to get into the finals. So it was huge team points. It was a big confidence booster for him, and you could see, you know, his confidence is coming along, and right now, that's really about all that's holding him back. So Zach's another one that is, you know, if we have a workout of any kind, Zach is there. He doesn't miss anything, and it's going to pay off. He's got two years left to go, and I know we're going to see even bigger things from him. Zach Dennis.[477.62][477.62](applause) Blake Cook, stand up. Blake, as much as Zach's in, Blake has been probably our leader, you know, for the last two or three years in terms of just the time put in, whether it's lifting or running or wrestling. Again, he's one of them that if we had a workout, he was there. So he took sixth at the Kansas City Stampede this year. You know, he's a three-time placer for us now. He took fourth as a sophomore. He took second last year as a junior. Took sixth this year at Kansas City Stampede, huge accomplishment, first at conference, first at districts, and ended up fifth at the state tournament. He lost to the kid who took second. He lost to the kid who took third. I know, you know, he came up a little short of his goals, and it's always tough to get back into the, into the finals, you know, and repeat. You know, he was right there with all the best wrestlers in the state at his weight class and just came up a little bit short, but, you know, again, couldn't be more proud of who Blake is as a person and his leadership, and I know, you know, if he chooses maybe to wrestle in the future, we're still working on that, he can, you know, but right now, he's not planning on that, but whatever he chooses, I know that he just finished with MEPS, correct? Yeah, so he's enlisting in the National Guard and going to go to school. So he's been a great, great leader. Blake Cook.[564.91][564.91](applause) Nate Schner. Nate is a junior for us. Nate just missed out last year on qualifying for the state tournament, and I think that determination pushed him over the edge this year. Nate's another one, you know, along with Zach, we're real close in that confidence level, you know, it's building all the time. When Nate is confident, Nate is a great wrestler. He had a good year. He took fourth at conference and then third at districts, which made him a state qualifier. Again, he's one that just keeps pushing and gets more, more and more confident, and I think as that confidence comes, we got one more year out of him, but things are going to happen. So Nate Schner.[612.62][612.62](applause) Trace Dunlap, Trace Bacon. Now, Trace is a sophomore for us. Trace took third at conference. He took second at districts, and as a sophomore, ended up fifth at state. So he doesn't get me to, I won't talk anymore about him since he's not here. Had a good year, though. Ethan Turner. Ethan is another sophomore for us. See a theme there, sophomores and juniors. We've got lots of, lots of guys coming back. Ethan had a good year. He took fourth for us at conference. He took third at district, became a state qualifier. Again, you know, he splits time with baseball and wrestling in the spring and summer, but when he can get in, he's there. His technique has come a long way in the last year. Ethan's one of those that from day one in the room, it doesn't matter if he was going with a coach or, you know, the toughest senior in the room, Ethan believes that he should be beating on you. And so, you know, that drive and that motivation is pushing him along. Again, the confidence started coming along in the second, and most of the year this year, you could see it. See him really taking off. So he had a good year for us. Again, he'll be back for another couple, so we're looking for big things from him. Ethan Turner.[693.12][693.12](applause) Another sophomore, Rowdy Ball. Took third for us at conference, third at districts and state, he ended up being a state qualifier, had a couple competitive matches at the state tournament. You know what, and I'll go back, you know, talk a little bit more about, remind me, sorry, of Nate. Nate was a match away from placing at the state tournament this year as well, so he had a great state tournament for us. All right, I should have mentioned that earlier. Back to Rowdy, though. Rowdy was third at conference. He took third districts. He was a state qualifier. Rowdy kind of tale of two seasons. I think everybody at the beginning of the year, halfway through, was kind of like, what's going on here? He got more for us, and Rowdy really, the second half of the year, learned to start enjoying the physicality of wrestling, and he is a physical specimen. He's going to be a handful in the next couple of years. And as he comes along and continues to enjoy wrestling and continues to enjoy the physicality and being in grind in matches, you could see that in the second half of the year paying off. And he had a, he had a good year, but he had a great second half of the year, in my opinion, and came a long way, and we're continuing, you know, we're going to look for big things out of him going forward. Rowdy Ball.[773.62][773.62](applause) We're on the list. Peyton Semley, is Peyton here?
Drew.
Yeah, you are. I missed you. My eyesight, sorry, man. Stand up, Drew. I'm sorry. You know I wouldn't forget you on purpose. Drew's one of our seniors. Drew started the year at 145, and about halfway through, he went up, went up to 152, and I think, you know, most of the time, guys go the other way, but I think Drew felt a lot more comfortable wrestling at 152. You know, and he had a, he had a great year. I know that at times, he was a little bit frustrated, but he battled through some of those adversities. And, you know, I think that those adversities are going to continue to drive all of us if we give it an opportunity, but Drew as well, because he's not going to back down. And he didn't back down. A lot of people would have backed off a little bit and been discouraged. If he was discouraged, he didn't show it a whole lot and fought through that. He ended up third in conference. He lost to the eventual state champion in the semifinals, I believe, to knock him into a third-place match. He took thirty districts. He lost to an individual from Washington that he ended up beating in the blood run to get into place at the state tournament. Again, another loss avenged. And then he ended up fourth in, at the state tournament. So finished very, very strong. I wouldn't have suspected otherwise, but it would have been easy not to have. So he also is, he's our second All-State, academic All-State athlete, so they're setting the standards. He and Presley are setting the standards in the classroom as well, which is a good thing. Drew's been a good leader for us as well, and I know he's going to be successful as he travels and attends BYU next year, right? All right, Drew.[890.23][890.23](applause) Is Peyton out here? I'm going to mention him anyway. So Peyton Semley, for those of you that know Peyton, Peyton had a good year for us. Peyton was one of those that last year as a junior, barely, he lost in the round to qualify for the state tournament. He would have won one more match at districts, he would have qualified. He really put his mind to, you know, that he was going to be a placer and applied himself and, you know, attended just about every offseason workout that we had, and it paid off. He started out a little bit rough, but as the year progressed, he just kept finding ways to win, which is, again, a tribute to his character. But he ended up third in conference, third in districts, and ended up being a state qualifier, which was his goal, and was competitive when we got to the state tournament. So could have easily won a match or two. Just a great person, great individual, and I know he'll do well as he graduates and moves on. So those are our individuals that achieved All-Conference, All-District, All-State honors. Again, couldn't be more proud of who they are and what they're doing. Thank you again for the opportunity to recognize them tonight and for what you guys do.[964.12][964.12](applause)
Hello, I'm Coach Blair, and I am going to talk about girls swim. I want to first thank the board for allowing me to be the co-head coach with Jason Cravens this year. He has tons of experience, and I think he kind of had it in his mind that he would do it for a few years and really bring somebody along and teach them a lot, and I have definitely learned a lot this year, and hopefully I'll get to continue that for a few more years. So I want to thank you for allowing that to happen. Last year, I was more of just an assistant coach, kind of volunteer basis, and I really do thoroughly enjoy being with the girls. It's a really small group. Last year, we had a lot to work on and it was sort of really crazy with just a couple volunteer coaches, but I think this year, we really set, you know, set in stone some, you know, definite drills and things for them to really work on and really let them see where they are at and all the little things that we can work on throughout the season. It's a fairly young group that we have. That just means more time I get with them, right? So we have a few honorable mentions in All-Conference that I will talk about, but if you ask any of the coaches in our conference, whenever they say what our girls are like, we're the sweet girls, right? So I really do have a good group of girls, but I'm like, just because we're sweet doesn't mean that we can't kick some butt, right? So again, with my, my young group, hopefully, this list will become a lot longer in the next year or two. So first, I have, and I don't know who all was able to show up, but first, I have Maggie Killian. Is she here? So Maggie's a senior. She did get All-Conference or All-Conference Honorable Mention for her 100 brush stroke. And, you know, Maggie was one of those where even last year and the year before, I mean, she just kept pushing to become better, and she never gave up. And, you know, it just so happens that this year, you know, being her senior year, she did, you know, at least get that All-Conference Honorable Mention. So that really was kind of her goal, to get higher up. And, you know, last year, it wasn't pretty. I'll just tell you that, and she will say that too. It wasn't pretty, but honestly, we keep working on it, and she just worked super hard, and she was able to do that. So then I have Isabel DeWolfe. She's a sophomore, and, I mean, we could put her in pretty much anything. We're like, you know, Isabel, I see, you know, let's try this event, let's try that event. So we can kind of put you a little bit of everywhere because by the time you're a junior and a senior, you know, you'll be real flexible to be put wherever you need because, yes, it is a team sport, but it is individual as well. And she did get All-Conference Honorable Mention in the 200 freestyle, which is kind of something we just kind of threw her in, say, we're going to work on this for conference because we have all the other spots taken, and we really think that you'll do well on that, and she did. I have Skylie Adams, who's a senior. She was All-Conference in the 100 butterfly, and that was like her thing. That's what she did at every meet. She was our butterfly, and, I mean, she would do her best. She would, you know, really take criticism, what do I need to work on? And you tell her something, and she's going to fix that. She also did get All-Conference Honorable Mention in the 200 IM, so that's four different strokes. And at first, she was really hesitant with that, but again, she, she did awesome with it because we saw that potential in those different things, other than just being, other than just doing the butterfly. And lastly, I have Addison Brennike. I know that she is here because I'm also her track coach, and I was like, let's go, right? So she did get All-Conference in the 200 freestyle, and kind of like what we did with Isabel, it's like, all right, Addison, where can we put you? You know, we see your strengths here, and, you know, we're a sophomore. We got a couple more years. And I know by the time she's a senior, I mean, we're going to be so versatile, put you in lots of different things. I don't think that she likes that, right? But, you know, you'll be able to do so many different things because we definitely see that potential in Addison to become even better junior and senior year. But I remember at conference, she's like, man, I'm just ready to go. Like, I feel, I feel ready. I said, well, let's go do it, and she did it. So really proud of Addison. So Addison's here.[1252.85][1252.85](applause) So as a whole, we did finish fifth at conference. Our 200 freestyle relay did earn a state consideration time as well, but it's really hard to actually get to state because it's kind of different than swim. If there's so many people to get a state consideration time, they're still going to pick the fastest ones out of that, up to so many. But the fact that we did get that consideration time is pretty awesome for this group. We did lose a couple on that, but even with Addison and even Isabel and some of those, and Jordan's here too, right? But so I think even next year and the previous, and the next year's, you know, following that, you know, it's very possible for us to get some, some girls swimmers to state, which is ultimately the goal. And so I do want to thank the board for everything that you guys do for this program. It is a small program. We're hoping to build it, and, I mean, that's, that's the goal, to get some, some more athletes. And honestly, all my girls, they're really great academically as well, and they are the sweet girls, but we can still go kick some butt. So thank you so much.[1328.41][1328.41](applause)
Families, thanks for being here. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meetings, but you're also free to go if you choose.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Aaron Bryan, principal of Jefferson Elementary, will recognize our Heartland Hero, Feature Teacher of the Month.
First and foremost, oh, man. Okay. First and foremost, happy Board Appreciation Week. Just want to thank you guys for your selfless leadership. You guys have created so many opportunities for students and staff here at this district, so definitely want to give you guys a big shout. I appreciate you. I know what Melissa Woods is thinking right now. She's probably thinking, Bryan kept it short and sweet. But, no, I'm really honored and thankful to get the opportunity to introduce Jefferson Elementary's Heartland Hero and Feature Teacher. I think both Melissa Woods and Amanda Stites would agree that they kind of tend to shun the spotlight and the attention, and they prefer to work their magic behind the scenes. You know, as a building leader, it's my job to recognize the supreme effort and sacrifices that these two individuals have made in order to do what's best for students. These two have gone above and beyond to support and positively impact the school of Jefferson, the district as a whole, and the community of Farmington in ways that will create a lasting and sustained effect. We here at Jefferson are forever grateful for their hard work and dedication to the field of education. So our Jefferson Heartland Hero goes to a person I really, I really feel couldn't be more deserving of this honor. You know, the definition of hero is a person who is admired and revered for their courage, outstanding achievements, or their noble qualities. We at Jefferson feel that Melissa fits those qualities and then some. For the six years that Melissa has served at Jefferson Elementary, she's gone out of her way to make sure that students at Jefferson feel safe and cared for. So you really get to find out about an individual's leadership qualities, not in times of comfort and ease, but in times of uncertainty and confusion. In the unparalleled and extraordinary public health emergency that we found ourselves in for the last few years, Melissa stood where all nurses stood, on the front lines. In the midst of the pandemic storm, Melissa was our rock. She was always willing to problem solve and work through complications as we developed building processes to combat the pandemic. She took the time to help our staff make sense of the sometimes confusing quarantine guidelines, and every time there was a change, which was quite a bit, she was able to maintain her calm in order to communicate our district's safety practices gracefully with colleagues, communicating with parents, communicating with community members. Throughout the pandemic, Melissa still found time to partner with the American Heart Association to educate our students and promote heart health, raising over $2,000 for this worthy cause. So when speaking to Melissa's colleagues, they were quick to chime in with how much Melissa is willing to go the extra mile to support students and that she always does it with a smile on her face. So with that, I want to definitely present Melissa Woods as our Jefferson Heartland Hero.[1605.62][1605.62](applause) I've also been given the distinct honor and privilege of presenting one Miss Amanda Stites from Jefferson Elementary with our Feature Teacher. And for working alongside her during, again, such an unusual and unpredictable year, and then talking to Amanda's colleagues, one word that describes her is passionate and compassionate. Her passion for teaching the whole child is one of the aspects that makes Amanda so important to our building and our district. Her compassion for her craft not only impacts her students that she works with on a day-to-day basis, but it also impacts the entire building's overall climate and culture. Amanda plays a pivotal role in our character education model and our student character initiatives. This model's built on the foundation, again, of common building expectations. We always use that term "three up." That was a term that was coined by Miss Stites, just to remind students to be safe, respectful, and responsible in all parts of the building. She's definitely helped to bring uniformity to the communication to teachers and students throughout the entire building. She's also a huge part of our building service learning projects that we engage students in. She's gone above and beyond with coordinating these projects and communicating them with, with the Farmington community. You know, I feel like to Amanda, teaching isn't just a call, or isn't just a job. It is a calling. To her, you know, teaching's not just a profession. It is, she's made it her mission to affect kids in a positive way. She's always been honest with herself, asking reflective questions such as, are my students at an advantage because I'm their teacher? Amanda has realized that teachable moments just don't pop up during conventional moments of the instructional day. She understands and she capitalizes on moments that often pop up during some unstructured time. Amanda is one of our third grade lunch duty teachers. She's so good about taking those moments in the lunchroom and turning them into character lessons instead of just supervision. She's seen an opportunity for students to learn and apply character skills, and she's taken advantage by showing leadership and leading students through character videos pertaining to our character words, which, again, creates opportunities for them to have collaborative conversations with each other during lunch about a variety of different topics. These are just some of the ways that Amanda has impacted Jefferson and thus the Farmington School District in a positive way. So please, please, help me congratulate her nomination for the Feature Teacher.[1790.54][1790.54](applause)
Information portion of our, may you hear the information has been provided. We have a policy update that we would need to get a motion and a second on. It's approved the changes to policy J H C D.
Second.
Ball favor. And on our consensual agenda, need a motion and a second to approve the consensual agenda.
Second.
Ball favor. Thank you. At this time, we adjourn, need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss personnel pursuant to 610.021, paragraphs 1, 3, 13, and 14.
Second.
Bauthe?
Yes.
Fine?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks guys.
Have a good evening.